Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. We're gonna start tonight with a public hearing for our annual performance report. I'm gonna ask Dr. Curtis Knoll, WSuperintendent of Schools, to come up and present that report. At the end of the report, if anybody'd like to make comment, I'll ask that you come to the podium and state your name, and if you'll keep your comments for about two minutes, we'd appreciate it. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Knoll.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Husbands, members of the Board, Dr. Stockton, and community. My pleasure to be here tonight to present to you an overview of our 2015 Annual Performance Report. The Annual Performance Report is available in its entirety on the Conroe ISD website. You can go under the Accountability tab and find all of the information that I'll be sharing tonight, as well as a copy of this PowerPoint and the full performance report. The Annual Performance Report is a compilation of several different reports and documents, first of which is the Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER; also, the PEEMS Financial Standards Report, the Campus Performance Objectives, which come from the Campus Improvement Plans, the Report on Violent and Criminal Incidents from campuses, and also the Reports of Graduates Enrolled in Texas Institutions of Higher Education. Included in this year's report from the TAPER are the results of STAR, AP exams, college entrance exams. Also in the TAPER are fifth and sixth-year extended graduation rates, attendance data, and demographic information. The PEEMS Financial Standards Report is separate. It used to be included in the AEIS report, and it is also published on the TEA website, and there is a link from our TAPER and also from our Annual Performance Report directly to the PEEMS Financial Standards Report. Beginning to look at our TAPER, our 2015 Accountability Rating was met standard, 2015 Special Education Determination Status needs assistance, as we've previously spoke about in meetings before. We understand that's an area of concern for us, and we'll continue to work forward. Looking at enrollment, our 10-year enrollment trend from 2005 to 2015, you can see our 2015 number was at 56,164. That would've been the enrollment in October of 2014 from last year. Just to note that our current enrollment, as of this morning, was 58,343, so the growth continues. Our student membership, you can see our breakdown at 6.3% African-American, 35% Hispanic, 51.7% white, 0.5% American Indian, 3.6% Asian, .2% Pacific Islander, and 2.7 of two or more races. Economically disadvantaged students at 35.8%. It should be noted that that's a demographic that's actually on the decrease. It's gone down each of the last few years. We're down almost two points from previous years. And our English Language Learner population is at 13.2%. As we do in so many ways, we like to benchmark ourselves with comparable districts. For many of you that attend all of our Board meetings and for certainly our school board, you've seen a lot of this data already, kind of framed in different ways. So we chose to do this tonight to let you see how we compare to those districts that we often benchmark ourselves against. So this first slide here shows you the STAR percent at phase-in, students that passed all subjects this year, and you can see Conroe at 87%. For students that passed and made advanced standards in all subjects, we were at 28%. Percent of our students that met or exceeded progress, you can see the breakdown there from reading and math, 64% in reading, 59% in math. And I would highlight in math, really only ninth grade is included in this bar, so it's kind of deceiving. Our elementaries, intermediates, and junior high campuses did really well in math. It just didn't count in this year's accountability. So that's an area that we feel like we'll see a large bump next year, just because they will all be included in the accountability. Our English Language Learners, another one of those areas that we're working hard to improve on, all students, or students passing all subjects at 60%. And then our special education students at 51%. You can see it's an area of target for us. It's also an area of target for many other districts. We are in company there of a lot of us trying to work on that and improve our scores. Our economically disadvantaged students, once again, at phase-in for the blue and then advanced standard for the gold. We're at 75% and 11% with our economically disadvantaged. Attendance rate at 96.3% last year, and went ahead and added kind of a new slide this year because this is exciting. For the first time, we have passed the state average in attendance, and that attendance lags. So what we're seeing is actually not even last year's attendance here. We're seeing a year even further back. And that's, this would've been the first year. Attendance's always been very important, but it became a part of the accountability system. It really kind of became more and more important, and our campuses have done a fantastic job of focusing on attendance from, you know, we have teachers that call every day to make sure kids are showing up, special programs that go on. We have our Community Outreach Department with Rod Chavez, and his team have gone in to really focus with campuses to help improve attendance, and you can see that it's paid off. So 96.3%, like we said, that's almost two-year-old data at this point, but current year-to-date, 96.7 right now. So what a great start, yes?
Is that attendance from K through 12?
Yes.
That's everybody?
Overall, yes. Everybody included. Dr. Stockton always mentions if we had one slide to show the whole picture, this would be that slide, and it's that annual dropout rate. It's, we want to make sure that we, our kids come to school, and this slide is a picture of what the entire district does. It starts in kindergarten, it's every auxiliary department, it's every campus, it's everybody making a difference in child's lives to get them at school. And you can see at 0.1% for our seventh and eighth graders, and then at 0.5% through our ninth through 12, that's a number to be very proud of. And we wish it was zero, absolutely, but that's a number to be proud of, and that's a lot of work by our campus staffs to make this happen.
Does UML not report that, or do they?
Well, we pulled this right off their chart. It just may have been a number just below ours, and it allowed it to show up at 0.0.
We've been zero in the past.
Yeah.
We've been zero in the past.
Yeah. Junior high, it's, you can get a zero in a junior high typically. That's a reporting issue when you have a dropout in junior high. We don't lose that many, but you may have a student that moves out of state, and they don't report back, and if we lose track of them, the state counts them as a dropout. So this will be our class of 2014, the four-year cohort. So how far did they get in four years? And you can see for us, 94.7% graduated, 2.9% continued. So this is those high school campuses continuing to reach out to those students that didn't quite make it. Could've been a test score, could be a lack of credits, but they keep pulling them back. Even those students that may have wanted to be a dropout or were a dropout, they get recovered. We call it recover. They go on the hunt, and they do a great job of pulling those students back in. And you can see that when you go to the 2013, the five-year cohort. So at the end of five years, we bump all the way up to 96.5% graduated and 1.4% receiving a GED. So we don't give up on them after four years. We have those big graduation ceremonies with, are those students that we continue to work with even beyond those graduation ceremonies. And we understand that our sophomores and below are House Bill V students, so the graduation plans are changing. But for our juniors, seniors, and those that have already graduated, they've been on the old graduation plans. And so this shows the percentage of students that graduated under the recommended plan or the distinguished plan on the old system. And you can see at 91.4, that's a great job of our students taking hard curriculum, also our counseling staff of really helping to push students into those programs. Our percentage of students taking AP exams, we talk constantly about the benefits of AP and dual credit. To see 35.2% of our students attempt at least one AP exam before they graduate is a great thing, and it's magnified by the fact that we have such a large course catalog of dual credit courses as well that aren't even included in this number. So when you, when you look at this and the dual credit, that's a difference-maker for students as they go through high school and move on to college. Our AP test scores, as you can imagine, if we're gonna test more students, sometimes we do see a little bit of a bump down in our overall performance. And at 66.2, that's a, that's a good number. It's a number where we have room to improve there, and we continue to work on that to make sure that our students are successful once they do take those tests. I will note that many of our campuses, which are unlike other districts, we really encourage students to take the test. You know, some places, if a student took a course and they didn't feel like they were gonna be successful in the test, they would just tell them, "You've taken the course, but not to take the test." Our campuses would encourage kids to take the test. So we may have students that would take six or seven AP exams in a single year over a two-week period. So tough to prepare for seven exams in two weeks. Our percent of 2014 graduates that have taken the SAT or ACT, you can see at 68.3. This is a number that we expect to go up. We actually have campuses now that have chosen and are now beginning to give the ACT during the school day, which will provide access to many students that may have not had access to those tests before. We've also added testing sites for the Saturday test within our school district boundaries. And then students scoring at criteria or above on those college entrance exams, 44.9 for Conroe ISD. In the financial portion, which I, once again, you can access through the TAPER on our website, I'll just hit a few of the highlights of our financial performance. Once again, as we benchmark to those districts which you've seen us compare to in all the academic slides, you can see that we've done well, very well on the academic slides, and then when you put this slide up there, it really magnifies what we do on the academic side at $1.28 overall tax rate, you know, 11 cents better than even the next closest The comptroller recognition, the Financial Allocation Study for Texas or FAST is a report released by the Comptroller's Office that rates school districts on their academic performance in relation to their cost for taxpayers. So just as we were speaking of, Conroe ISD is one of only four school districts in Texas to have earned five stars in each of the five years since the beginning of this program. When you look at our operating expenditures, you can see that at 60.97% of our budget into instruction, well beyond the state average, and that's a number that we're proud of. As you look down, you can also see, you know, many of the things that we talk about are priorities. You see them come through in our budget. Our school leadership is important to us. Our guidance and counseling is important, and also our security is important to us as we provide that for our campuses. 2014-2015 staff information, 50.5% of our staff are teachers. Average years of experience, 11.3. Average years in the district at 7.1. Teacher turnover rate at 14% is, you know, over two and a half points lower than the state. That's to be proud of. And our average teacher salary, $53,340. We also report during our annual report the criminal incidents that occurred on our campuses. We had 59 reportable criminal incidents at 13 different campuses this year. Forty-two of those were felony-controlled substances. Still, the number-one cause for those felony-controlled substances comes straight out of the medicine cabinet at home. They are prescription drugs that find their way onto our campuses. We did see an increase this past year of those synthetic. We've read about that. We've talked about that in the past, the synthetic LSD and those type of things that you've read in the paper. We did see a little increase in those, but still the majority of our felony-controlled substances are prescription drugs. We get a report back every year of our students that attend four-year public universities or two-year public junior colleges in the state of Texas. You can see that we had 1,773 of our students go forth to those type of universities. Now, this can be a little misleading because we also send a lot of kids to private schools. We send many kids out of state, so we're not seeing a full picture, but at 1,773, that represents a little more than half of our total graduates, and we're usually about 3,300 graduates each year. So you can see how many have moved forward. And when they get there, they've done pretty well. Well, we know that freshman year of college, we may not all want our GPAs thrown up here from our freshman year of college, but our kids really have done well. You know, those making 2.5 or above, that's a majority of our students that have gone on to be successful in their first year.
Dr. Knoll, I'm just curious, how do you even get this, this information?
The, the state actually publishes it and sends it to us. So they, they pull it, you know, there's a question of complete accuracy on making sure that they, that it, you know, everything gets reported correctly, and we can't verify that, but they send us an annual report.
Mine was never accurate, at least that's what I told my father.
There you go. Yeah. Very true. Very true. So once again, if you go to our website, you'll see the Annual Performance Report. It has links to many different sub-reports in there that you can find all the information that was shared. Additionally, this PowerPoint is available, and all of that information is up and posted on the CISD website at this time.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask anyone who wants to make a comment to come to the podium and make your comments. Okay, seeing no takers, that concludes our public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:17. If you would, please stand with me as Mr. Sanders leads us in the invocation, and Mr. Kidd in the pledges of allegiance.
Yesterday, we celebrated the life and the legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. Throughout his life, he turned to prayer for his own spiritual fulfillment while also delivering prayers to the public as a way to inspire and to reaffirm a quest for peace and social justice. The Reverend Dr. James Alexander Forbes, Jr., who is Senior Minister Emeritus of the Riverside Church and President of the Healing of the Nations Foundation, said, "If you want to know the source of his dream and his courage, understand what he lived for and why he was willing to die for it." I'd like to read to you one of several prayers that Dr. King recited during his radio broadcast from Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta, Georgia, between July 5th and September 6th, 1953, while Dr. King was then a graduate student at Boston University pursuing a PhD in philosophical theology, while he was spending his summers at Ebenezer with his father, assisting as an associate pastor. "O thou eternal God, out of whose absolute power and infinite intelligence the whole universe has come into being, we humbly confess that we have not loved thee with our hearts, souls, and minds, and that we have not loved our neighbors as Christ loved us. We have too often lived by our own selfish impulses rather than by the life of sacrificial love as revealed by Christ. We often give in order to receive. We love our friends and we hate our enemies. We go the first mile but dare not travel the second. We forgive but dare not forget. And so, as we look within ourselves, we are confronted with the appalling fact that the history of our lives is the history of an eternal revolt against thee. But thou, O God, have mercy on us. Forgive us for what we could have been but failed to be. Give us the intelligence to know thy will. Give us the courage to do thy will, and give us the devotion to love thy will. Amen."
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Kidd. Item 2A, Special District Grade Punishment, Dr. Stockton.
This is, January is, is School Board Appreciation Month in the state of Texas, and we are excited tonight to recognize our school district. Here representing administration is one of our newest doctors, Dr. Tamika Taylor, she's gonna come up, and she's going to present some well wishes.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the Board, and Dr. Stockton. I am truly honored for this opportunity to stand in front of you tonight on behalf of Conroe ISD's administrators, educators, staff members, and students to show thanks and gratitude for all you do. With unselfish effort, you volunteer your time and talents to children, to learning, and to the community while continuing to strive for improvement, excellence, and educational progress in our schools. You work tirelessly to strengthen our educational system and improve future prospects for our children. Although the month of January commemorates the School Board Appreciation, we appreciate everything you do throughout the school year, each and every day. Tonight, I am presenting tokens of appreciation on behalf of the students of Conroe ISD, as you will see behind you. This is an expression of gratitude for your leadership, for your support, for the countless hours you give that truly make it a great day to be in CISD. So, audience, please join me tonight in honoring and giving thanks to the CISD Board of Trustees for their dedication and commitment to fostering a bright future for our students and community.
Tamika, I just want to say thank you for that, for those very kind words. And to each of you, I just want you to know from a personal level, and I think I can dare speak for the rest, that it is really a blessing to serve. I mean, I hear all the time, you know, "Why do you have a job that doesn't pay anything? Why do you do that?" I mean, everybody always complains, well, they really don't. And I want you to know that we all know why they don't complain very much, and I'm looking at them, okay? So thank you back at you. But we accept, accept your thanks, and, and we are proud to serve, so. Anybody else say they're proud?
No, thank you very much. It's very kind.
Item, item 2B, citizen participation. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
Very good. Item 3, the consent agenda. I've had no request to remove any items, or there such at this time?
No, sir.
Very good. And then I will entertain a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda as posted, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Item passes. Item 4A, consider approval of dual-credit CTE emergency medical treatment course. Dr. Stockton.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Jim Caker, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, to come present this item.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. President Husbands, members of the Board, Dr. Stockton, good evening. I'd like to present to you tonight consideration for the approval of a dual-credit CTE emergency medical technician course. I'm joined tonight by Mr. Greg Ship, who is the Director of the CTE program. And what we're asking for is that the dual-credit career and technical education course will, to appear this coming year for certification in emergency medical technician. Included in the course are the skills necessary to provide emergency medical care at the basic level of life support, and also the emergency service and services service clinical support. And at this time, we would also like to tell you that it will be offered through Lone Star College in Montgomery County campus. We'd like your consideration for approval.
Mr. President, I move we approve as presented. A second?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Tell me what type of certificate that our students will get upon completion of this course?
If it would be EMT certification.
So it's the EMT Basic?
Yes, sir.
They will walk away with the EMT Basic?
Correct.
Tell me kind of if they weren't in school, what's the number of hours? If, if I wanted to go get my EMT Basic, what's, do you have an idea of the number of hours that I would have to go take class to get?
Yes, sir, I can tell you the number of college hours would be approximately six for the basic certification.
Okay. So this is really a whole year of college that we're offering for our students, so they walk away with a basic EMT certification, which allows them to basically be employed immediately?
Absolutely.
And then it puts them on an advanced path if they want to go for other certifications in that area as well? All right. Thank you.
This would also help with our nursing shortage in the state, correct? Because once they have that EMT certification, it helps with nursing school and everything else, right? Okay.
Very good. Any further discussion, questions?
No.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Caker.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ship. I know you've been working on this for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Awesome.
This is wonderful.
Item 5A, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Dr. Stockton.
This time, I'll invite our Chief Financial Officer, Darren Rice, to the podium to present our presenter.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the Board, and Dr. Stockton. This evening, we'd like to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the 2014-2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFFER. At first, I'd like to recognize the staff that is here that was very instrumental in developing the CAFFER.
Janice Sowers, Karen Garza.
And Cindy Westrop. They did a great job. The CAFFER was presented to the Audit Committee of the Board of Trustees on Wednesday, January 13th, for their review and comment. The report was favorably received by the Audit Committee. Sarah Roberts, a Weaver Senior Audit Manager, is here today to comment on our financial report and then address any questions that you might have. Sarah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Roberts, and I'm a Senior Manager with the firm Weaver &amp; Tidwell, the district's external audit firm. I'm here tonight to present to you the district's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended August 31st, 2015. I understand that you have received copies previously, so I'm just gonna go through and go over some of the high points, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I'm gonna start my presentation with the end result of the audit, which, for the case of the audit of Conroe Independent School District, which is an audit performed under governmental auditing standards and includes a single audit, the end result of the audit is the issuance of three independent auditors' reports. The first report is our report on the financial statements. The second two reports address compliance and other matters and the single audit major program findings. The major programs this year were the Child Nutrition Cluster and Title II Part A. In our report on the financial statements, we expressed an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can get. Our reports on compliance and internal control over financial reporting and internal control over compliance, both were as good as you can get. Clean opinions, no reportable instances of non-compliance, no material weaknesses in internal control identified. So, as good as you can get. Okay, moving on from the reports, the first financial statement of the district is a statement of net position, which is basically the balance sheet of the government as a whole. The district's net position at August 31st, 2015, is about $111 million. Approximately 10% of that is unrestricted net position. One thing that I did want to bring your attention to is that there are some differences in the 2015 statement of net position compared to the 2014 statement, resulting from the implementation in 2015 of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 68 and 71, both related to pensions. These statements require that the district recognize a liability for its proportionate share of the net pension liability of the teachers' retirement system of Texas. That's a significant change. These statements require that the district recognize the effect of implementation of these statements retroactively as of the beginning of the year, which required an adjustment to beginning net position of negative $52.7 million. The change in net position resulting from current period operations was a positive $26 million. Last year's change in net position was a positive $15.2 million. The increase this year primarily relates to increased property tax revenue. Moving on to the fund-level financial information, general fund, total fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was $121.7 million. Of that, $115 million was unassigned, and that represents 29% of fiscal year 15 general fund expenditures. Last year's ratio of unassigned fund balance to general fund expenditures was 26%, so that ratio is consistent but slightly increased this year. Net change in fund balance for the general fund was a positive $20.4 million. Net change in fund balance for the general fund was a positive $20.4 million. The notes to the financial statements include a summary of the district's key accounting policies. Also, some of the keynote disclosures relate to capital assets, long-term debt, and there's also a lengthy new disclosure on pensions. Finally, the district's financial statements, Comprehensive Annual, excuse me, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report includes a statistical section, which is not audited, but provides some additional financial trend information, operating statistics, demographic, and economic information that is useful for understanding the results of the district's operations in context of the district as a whole. Finally, I want to conclude by just mentioning a new accounting standard that's going to be effective for fiscal year '16, which is GASB Statement Number 72, Fair Value Measurement and Application. This statement, fortunately, is not going to involve multimillion-dollar restatements of net position or recognition of any significant liabilities. At most, I expect for Conroe Independent School District, it will result in some modifications to some of the note disclosures regarding fair value measurements. And that's it, any questions?
I, I have a question, and I, I think I know the answer to this. Every school district across the entire state of Texas, under the GASB 68, had to go back because Texas, our teacher-retirement system is a defined benefit plan that is not properly funded. I want to be careful how I say that, but that, that every school district has to take their proportionate portion and present that on the financial statements.
That's correct.
Okay, so, there are some school districts that may not be in the, the financial position that Conroe is, where something like that actually might put them in a negative net position.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
But even in our case, with such a large number, it still left us with a positive net position, a strong positive net position.
Yes, yes. The adjustment for GASB 68 was a negative $50 million-
Yes.
-and you still have a remaining positive, healthy fund, net position.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure everyone understood that.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Sarah. At this time, I'm requesting that you approve the 2014-2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Very good. Mr. President, I move approval. Very good.
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor of approving the CAFFER, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, school district. It's pretty good, clean.
Awesome.
Clean.
Item 6A, Select Construction Manager at Risk for Multi-Campus CTE Robotics Projects, Dr. Stockton.
I'll ask our Director of Planning and Construction, Eze Foster, to come make that presentation.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval tonight the selection of a construction manager at risk for our multi-campus CTE Robotics Renovations Project, and then authorize Dr. Stockton, our superintendent, to negotiate and execute the construction manager at risk contract. In March, you, our Board of Trustees, selected IBI Group as the architect for our multi-campus CTE Robotics Renovations Project. Since then, the IBI Group has prepared and published a request for qualifications for a construction manager at risk related to this project. We had four firms respond to this request for qualifications, and after reviewing, after reviewing each company's qualifications, based on the district's and our published criteria, all four companies, GTT Construction, Balfour Beatty Construction, Morganti, and Purcell Construction, were each asked to participate in the second step of our two-step selection process. GTT Construction was selected as the offerer who submitted the proposal determined to be the best value for the district, based on our published criteria and our ranking evaluation. The Texas Government Code requires that we, the district, make our rankings to the public, rankings of the offers public within seven days of a contract award. Although we have not yet awarded this contract, we've included these rankings as part of your, this board item for your viewing today. At this point, we request your approval.
I have a motion.
I still make a motion.
I have a second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions?
No.
All those in favor of approval of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Item 6B, Consider Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the MEP Life Cycle 2016 Projects, Dr. Stockton.
Ms. Foster, please.
This time, I'd like to request for your consideration and approval, the, the approval of a guaranteed maximum price amendment for our MEP Life Cycle 2016, our Athletics Life Cycle, and our Building Envelope Life Cycle 2016 project. We're going to refer to this project from here and into the future as our 2016 Life Cycle project to condense that and make it a little bit more efficient. On September 15th, 2015, you, our Board of Trustees, selected GTT Inc. to be the district's construction manager at risk for this project. Since then, we've advertised and received bids from the marketplace for the scope work associated with the design of this project. GTT is prepared a guaranteed maximum price proposal, and based on this proposal, the district has negotiated a guaranteed maximum price for the project. The guaranteed maximum price for this project is $15,784,048. The contract documents will be prepared by our outside counsel, and then we're also asking for your authorization to have Dr. Stockton further negotiate and execute those contract documents when they're completed. This time, we're requesting your approval of this guaranteed maximum price.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Awesome. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, question?
I do have a quick question. Looking over this, it looks like Runyon is getting roughly a third of this cost-
That is correct.
-and doing some pretty major overhaul, and, and I know that that campus very much needs it. So, I wanted to make sure that, you know, $15 million is a, is a big amount of money, but I want it to be noted, we're, we're putting the money in where it's truly needed, and we're really working hard to keep those campuses running, doing electrical overhauls and everything.
That is correct. We, we spent a great deal of time with our Director of Maintenance, Marshall Schrader, and his crew, the electricians, the air conditioning folks, the plumbing folks, the people that make our, our buildings run and operate, and continue to keep them operating at their, at their best performance possible. So, with their help and our, our design engineers, PPK, for this project, we've put together what we feel like is a package that can bring this building into a better, a better environment for the students and also operate at its peak efficiency. So, overall, investing this money will help us save money on our monthly utility bill long-term.
And is that all going to be able to be done over the summer, or is this going to disrupt the campus?
Well, we're asking for the, their approval in January so that we can go ahead and order some of the big, long lead-time equipment. So, as soon as we get the contract negotiated and finalized, we'll move forward ordering, ordering the structural steel for some of the components we've got to build inside the building. We'll order the, the equipment so it's ready. The idea is to have all the big stuff in place and ready to deliver, so when the school gets out and the students are gone, then we'll have everything to prosecute this work and get it done within the summer period.
Okay, wonderful.
Now, to be clear, though, we will be doing some work overhead in, in the off-hours, but the major portions of the work will happen after school is out for summer.
Isn't, isn't this basically the same overhaul of the, of the mechanical, if you will, that Oak Ridge Elementary just received?
In, in broad description, yes.
And I don't mean it in an exact terms, but is this not the first time that we've done this to Runyon? In, in its life cycle?
Yes.
I mean, in its life, excuse me. And it's, what, maybe 40 years older?
It is at least 40 years old, and a lot of the equipment that we are attacking at this particular project is original to the building.
I'd just point out that, that's, that's awesome that that school is, I mean, you know, we've, we've spent some other money on facelift there, and, and I assume this won't destroy what we've already spent. It, it's up above, it's, it's behind-the-scenes stuff, so to speak. I'm not saying you don't have to clean up afterwards.
Yeah, but no, the, the admin addition we did just a few years ago, and the classroom additions we did a few years prior to that, will be retained in their current state. Their, their equipment, their piping, their systems, their, their, were, were more up-to-date than the original building, obviously. But the majority of the work is to tie those newer systems into newer equipment for the original part of the building.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. For Executive Session, Capital Improvement C. Dr. Stockton.
Ms. Foster, what's-
Didn't mean to leave you out there, Ms. Foster.
That's quite all right. We are-
Do you have some pictures tonight?
We do, and from this point, moving forward, we're going to have a lot of pictures for you guys to review as we do our capital improvement update. So, at this time, I'd like to move forward with that, with the project we started showing you pictures of last month at the Woodlands High School, which is our girls' locker room addition. As you can see, it's starting to move very rapidly. The structure is in place. The lightweight insulated concrete for the roof deck is in place as of today. So, we're moving forward quickly with the systems inside the building, and their contractor's goal at this point is to get this building in a dry condition where the walls and, and the waterproofing is in place, so we can continue to work on the inside. So, the project is on schedule. It is opening in two phases. So, we're finishing the new additions, moving the girls into the new additions, and then we're going to renovate the existing girls' facility at that time. So, we will turn it over this summer, and it's complete, as the project is completed. Now, the new high school for the Oak Ridge Feeder Zone, last month, you authorized the clearing and the initial earthwork for the building pad. What you're seeing now are pictures of that work that's taken place since the last board meeting, during what I might add is some very difficult weather conditions, especially for this particular site. Everything you do causes more mud and more water to be exposed. So, but we are working, and I explained what you're seeing here. The first picture you're seeing is the, the back half of the building area, so you're seeing the, their, their clearing from the, what will be the future detention pond to the, to the right-hand side of the picture is your pipeline, to the left-hand side of the picture would be moving towards the Grand Parkway. Oh, I'm, I'm looking at, so I apologize. The bottom of the picture is the pipeline moving north towards the Grand Parkway as you move up in the photograph. Now, this is, further north, this is the clearing around the commercial reserve that we've left for the, the original landowner of the property to our, immediately to our east. So, we're defining, working out to define the boundaries of the property as we move forward. This project, to give you the update, the, the design plans for the building itself are in progress. They're very near their 100% mark. We have advertised, and we're going to the marketplace in February with those bids. We anticipate working with contractor diligently throughout the month of February to bring you a guaranteed maximum price that is acceptable for the construction targets to the March Board Meeting. And that is all.
Item 10, Legal, Level 3 Complaint Appeal Hearing, Dr. Stockton.
Okay, this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees is convened on January 19th, 2016. The quorum of the board is present, including the following members, Melanie Bush, Scott Kidd, Ray Sanders, John Husbands, and Skeeter Hubert. Purpose of this item on the board's agenda is to hear the complaint appeal of Maintenance Department Supervisor Mr. Chris Lewis in accordance with local policy DGBA. This hearing is being recorded. Mr. Lewis filed a complaint against the Director of Maintenance and Custodial Departments, Mr. Marshall Schrader. Because this complaint is against another district employee under Texas Government Code Section 551.074, this meeting will be held in closed session. At this time, the meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees is adjourned into executive session under Texas Government Code 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Everyone not associated with this hearing should now leave the room. The board will take no action while in executive session. Time is now 6:44.
No, no.
Okay, we're back in open session, 7:25. The board will now make its decision. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we uphold the Level 2 Hearing Officer's decision and deny relief.
Second motion. I have a motion and a second, any further conversation, discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion is upheld.
Mr. Lewis, I would like to say something, though.
Yes, sir.
I want you to know a couple of things. One is, we really do appreciate your service to our district, and we appreciate all that you do, we really do. I don't want that, and every board member expresses that same opinion. I don't want that to go without saying. But one of the tenants that I understand between employer and employee is communication, and I understand that that's not always 100%. And I think that was probably the case here, and I'm not taking sides, I'm just stating that as a fact. And one of the things, too, that I know, though, about employer-employee relations is that many times the employer has a process that they have to go through, and step one is to have a documented discussion with an employee about a disagreement. And I believe that that's what this was, and a question was asked while we were deliberating if I felt like that would, that even if we did as we did tonight, if that would make the relationship between the two of you stronger or weaker. And I said I thought it would make it stronger because I believed a couple of things. Number one, I believe that Mr. Schrader will make sure in the future that his communications are better. I believe also that if you don't understand, you're going to say, "Hey, wait a minute, I don't understand." And, and in my mind, that is the resolution that we were seeking, was just to make sure that everyone understood Mr. Schrader will work on his communication to, to his team. You're going to make sure if you're not understanding that, that you're going to ask those types of questions. In my mind, that's a win for everybody, and I just wanted to say that to you. Again, we thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, the district will send you a writ notice of the decision. This hearing is now concluded. Thank you very much.
Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Begging.
All those in favor signify by standing.